Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting. Item number one is called order. Members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. I'd now like to invite everyone who's able and willing to join me in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have item number four, which is the meeting minutes. I will be assisted by Councilmember Hodge this evening, but first she's going to read our Native Land Acknowledgement Statement. Councilmember Hodge.
We wish to acknowledge that Tempe is the homeland of the native people who have inhabited this landscape since the time of immortal. This ancestry land of the Akimahn, as known as Pima, and the Peepash, as known as Maricopa, and their ancestor extend far beyond our city. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Akimahn of the Salt River Pima slash Maricopa Indian Community and Gila River Indian Community. We accept the responsibility and stewardship those places unsolently on pledge to consider this commitment in every action.
Perfect. And you can go right into the meeting minutes. Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay. And I would like to submit a motion for approval of items 4A1 and 4A2, approval of City Council Meeting.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge, been seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that item passes five to zero with Vice Mayor Adams and Councilmember Navarro absent. Next up, we're going to go to item 4B, Acceptance of Board Commission and Committee Meeting Minutes. Councilmember Hodge.
I would like to submit a motion to approve items 4B1 and 4B2, Acceptance of Board Commissions and Committee Meeting Minutes.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that item also passes five to zero with Vice Mayor Adams and Councilmember Navarro absent. That brings us to item number five, Mayors' Reports and Announcements. Item 5A1, Reappointments and New Appointments to the City of Tempe Boards and Commissions. I want to congratulate Greg Hill and Councilmember Garland on their reappointments to the Audit Committee, Kelly Cholo on her appointment to the Desert Conservation Commission, Barb Harris on her appointment to the Enhanced Services Commission, Lori Messer and Jim Foley on their appointments to the Merit System Board, and Kara Espino on her appointment to the Parks Recreation Golf and Double Butte Cemetery Advisory Board. Next up, I'm going to go to item number 5B, City Managers' Reports and Announcements. Mr. City Manager.
We do have one. I'm going to invite staff up. Momentarily here, we're going to be giving you, Mayor and Council, an update on the river bottom efforts from last year and the continuing efforts since then. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing us to be here this evening to speak on behalf of many voices. My name is Paul Bentley. I'm the Deputy Community Health and Human Services Director here for the City of Tempe, and along with me is Craig Hayden, our Community Services Director. We are here this evening to speak on behalf of, again, many voices, individuals who have been a part of a solution to promote the health and safety of our community and our Tempe River Bottom, and we are very grateful to have the opportunity to speak on their behalf. Our agenda this evening, in a brief update, is provide a brief background as far as the need for a response within the Tempe River Bottom, the operations associated with a human services, social services-centric approach to meeting the needs of our community, outcomes from a specific initiative, and then also next steps. Within this work, we were directly connected to council priorities, most specifically, Council Priority 3.16, having to focus on managing of public spaces, as well as 3.28, which is our focus on ending homelessness by making it rare, brief, and one time. This chart is a visualization of data collected through Tempe Fire Medical Rescue that is providing a visual representation of emergency calls for service within the Tempe River Bottom since 2017. And so this data is clearly showing an increase of emergency calls with a drastic decrease in 2023, and that's why we're here, to provide some information in this update. We know that there's significant, or has been significant, health and safety concerns within the Tempe River Bottom associated with flooding, fires, lack of amenities, whether it be restrooms or showers, as well as lack of access for emergency vehicles in being responsive to our community. And with this data and with those specific examples of concern, our deputy city manager, Rosa Enchowsky, as well as our Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Chief, Greg Reese, felt that the implementation of an incident management team through a incident command system was best suited for the city's response to promote the health and safety of our community. The purpose was to establish, again, an IMT, or a very structured approach that would be comprehensive in nature, that would include staff, as well as nonprofit partners and other agencies when needed within this response. So in July of 2022, the IMT was established and put into practice. Craig?
Thanks, Paul. So as we stood up the IMT, the goals of the group that we kept in front of us, front and center, were to make sure that we were working collaboratively. That meant internally within the city, but also with some of our key partners. We led with services to make sure that we were evacuating the area safely, but also with compassion, that would then free us up to address any property that would be left behind, as well as removing debris and pruning vegetation. Our goal was to then be considerate of the sensitive environmental nature of the area, fulfilling contractual obligations with the county, some other folks, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and ultimately so that we would be sustainable, that we wouldn't have to come back with an effort of this size in the future. So we want to make sure that what we're doing is something that we could then go back and just do on a much smaller scale as items came up and we needed to address them. We saw it funding for mayor and council in the fall. We identified up to $2.6 million for this effort. To date, we have spent right around $2 million on shelter, security, to stand up a resource village that Paul will talk about, debris removal, additional signage on site, and then also the care of the vegetation through removal and pruning efforts. With that, keyed on sustainability, we have identified for this budgetary process a $448,000 budgetary press request that would ensure the ongoing addressing of debris, as well as vegetation within the area. I'm going to provide a very quick overview of the areas that we're focused on, just to provide some context. We have 150 acres west of the Tempe Town Lake. This is City of Tempe jurisdiction in the river bottom. Starting from west to east, we have Section 1, 95 acres from the 143 to Priest Drive, and then the more densely vegetated area in Section 2, from Priest Drive going to the east to the west side of the Tempe Town Lake. This was areas that we took the responsibility for as city jurisdictional area. And then the bottom right-hand side of the slide identifies the resource village that I mentioned previously, that Paul will also provide a brief overview as well. Section 3, the area east of the Tempe Town Lake, from McClintock Drive to the 101, while it wasn't city property, it was something that we worked closely in that interdepartmental and collaborative approach with some of our key partners, Maricopa County and A.DOT being two key partners, to make sure that we're addressing it. Because it was, though it wasn't city property, it certainly was proximate to areas within the City of Tempe marketplace, as well as the Salt River Pima-Maricopa Indian Community as well, so that we know that these bordered some areas of significance as well. We embarked on this effort in four key phases. We led with preliminary outreach in the hottest of months, last year in July and August. Preliminary outreach did continue through the rest of the phases when it was necessary down on the river bottom. That freed us up in September to address debris. Shortly after, we received the clearance from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, we were able to then commence vegetation work in October. And again, as we'll mention a little bit later on, we then are in a sustainability mode and maintenance starting this March, and that, those will be efforts that will continue moving forward. So this just pictorially identifies what we're now going to talk through in individual phases, and for that, I'll turn it back over to Paul.
So within Phase 1, our preliminary outreach, we knew that it was imperative that we have very open and candid and transparent communication to our community, to individuals in need, as well as our partners. And so from that, our communications and marketing group came together with a sustainable communication plan, and in that, we ensured that we were targeting specific media to ensure that the information and the steps that were being conducted were being communicated very openly, with the ability to respond to questions received. We had promotional materials, signage, resource cards, flyers, mailers. There was a significant desire to make sure that we were getting the information out to all that were interested and those in need. And in addition to that, came the realization of the Care and Hope Line, which is 24 hours, seven days a week. It's, I will talk about that line at the conclusion of this presentation, but we established and set up a phone line that anyone can call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to be connected to services and care. As the implementation of this plan was enacted, as we were providing preliminary outreach and providing significant outreach in the river bottom with outreach specialists through Hope, CARE7, as well as partnership with Circle the City and other partners within the river bottom itself, making direct connection, we also established and set up a resource village at a location that was easily accessible for those in need. And so highlights of this resource village were the ability to address property needs, to provide direct access to shelter and housing. In order to provide direct connections to resources, we also had partnership with our city court, our municipal court, to providing a warrant resolution program. So many of the concerns that you hear about nationally, we intended to have a solution here within the resource village. Outcomes. This is a specific slide from the resource village, one of our outreachers, as well as individuals receiving care. Proof, right? Proof of life. We were there. It happened. We existed. But in that, here are some of the specific outcomes. During this time, after we initially put out communications of what was going to occur and within our response within this area, we engaged with 75 unduplicated individuals. And within that connection, 50 of those individuals accepted shelter at that point in time. 66% of the folks that we were working with said, yes, we're looking for assistance and help us in that way, amongst others. Through your support, your direct support with the establishment of two emergency shelters in our city, all right? We have Susa Spashio. We also have Elise with a partnering agency that we had access for shelter for folks to go into. And so while I cannot communicate tonight very specific of what happened to these 50 individuals, or where are they now, what I can communicate is that our shelters, our emergency shelters, and the services that are provided through our Department of Community Health and Human Services, that we know about 85% of the individuals that go into those two shelters have some form of successful outcome. That successful outcome is either a diversion to a family member or friend into another more appropriate shelter opportunity or housing.
Quickly, Councilmember Hodge has a question.
Okay. On that one slide, when you said there is, you know, 50 accepted shelters, 75 engaged, do you know anything that happened to the other percentage of people that didn't accept the shelter?
We know that somehow they self-resolved.
Huh?
We know that they self-resolved, and that could be in many things. They could have found another location to be, period, or they could have found a friend, family member, or elsewhere to be, or some individuals do have income and do have the ability to transition from an unsheltered situation to some form of rental assistance or rental property on their own. Not many, but some.
Okay. Thank you.
So leading in Phase 1 with services allowed us to then address the debris in Phase 2. Happy to report that pre and post vegetation work is complete. Within Sections 1 and 2, our contractors, led by city staff, removed 152 tons of debris. A.DOT has since addressed Section 3, the down, the upside, on east of the Tempe Town Lake. They removed just over 70 tons themselves in these areas, so well over 200 tons of debris between the three sections. Following and even concurrently, we worked on vegetation, similar to some of our efforts that we've embarked on in other sensitive areas, the removal of non-native invasive species, as well as the pruning and thinning of native and desirable species to make sure the area is more manageable moving forward. With the exception of a very small area that stayed wet throughout our process, I'm happy to report that the vegetation work is complete. We will go back and address that area as the area continues to drought. Thankfully, the river bottom is dry now, but when we saw the flows go through, we knew that that area is just going to continue to remain wet. Debris, 152 tons on the vegetation side because of its density, 3,299 tons of debris removed or vegetation removed from Sections 1 and 2, which then led to the reality of an extremely wet winter and spring, snow melt, and the river bottom was acting as a river. And from our perspective, the dam worked as it should, thanks to the Water Utilities Team and their diligence, but we were able to then ensure, leading with evacuation, with services, and then removing debris, and then pruning up vegetation, that the river also was clear of people from a public health and safety standpoint. And additionally, environmentally, we didn't see debris flow downstream that would have been. The 152 tons of debris that would have been there would have just flowed downstream. We took that on as a responsibility to make sure that we were being good stewards, not just of this area, but of the river as a whole. Thankfully, the water has receded since, and we look forward to getting back in with our sustainability plan, which really does lead us into where do we go from here, Phase 4. We want to remain diligent. We want to make sure that we're keeping an eye within Sections 1 and 2, and then communicating clearly with our partners, A.DOT, in Section 3. And as I mentioned previously, we want to make sure that we are being sustainable through the funding that we've requested for debris removal as we encounter it, but also with proactive annual vegetation work as well within Sections 1 and 2, as well as continuing to communicate and coordinate with A.DOT.
What you're seeing now is a visual representation of the incident management team, and the intention really is to show the complexity of it, but also the comprehensive nature of what it is, consisting of a policy group made up of members of the City Manager's Office, council members, as well as our Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Chief, as well as our Chief of Police, who are made up of our policy group. We also had an incident command to ensure that the operations and all the functions that followed were being managed and were done in an appropriate manner. Safety, our risk management was involved. Public information, planning, logistics, operations, liaison to our community, legal, finance, all our aspects of the incident command system within an incident management team, which we followed to ensure that we were covering our bases throughout the process with our communication. In addition, this is also recognizing the comprehensiveness of the departments that were involved, in that we have, again, the City Manager's Office involved. We have City Council involved. We have Community Health and Human Services and Community Services within the incident command. Risk management, neighborhood services, municipal utilities, City Attorney's Office, Municipal Budget Office, as well as our Communications and Marketing Group, and as well as well. So the full intention is just to recognize that the intention was to make sure that we were being comprehensive, with social services and human services being the emphasis for all of this work, and then following through on what we stated that we were going to do on behalf of the community. With that, the closing is with Care and Hope Line. Sustainable, still in action, an area for anyone in the community that wants or needs connection to services, whether it's be someone who is experiencing homelessness or having mental health challenges, substance use challenges, or just a need to connect because they know they need to connect. And it's 480-350-8004. And with that, we are here for any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you so much. Really appreciate the presentation. Any other members of council have comments or questions? Yes, Vice Mayor Adams?
After we call the number, about how long does it take as far as response time if we see someone homeless in our community?
The pause is that I get to be a part of the stream that's happening throughout the day and seeing the connections that are being made. So to be very direct, a response to an individual from the Care and Hope Line is typically within that day, within hours, and sometimes within an hour. It depends on the volume of calls that are coming in at that point in time and our availability of resources. The guarantee, though, is that we will be responsive, and so that if we are able to go, we go. And again, from being able to see that live stream, as a call comes in and gets transferred from the Care and Hope Line to our Hope Office, they are on it and responsive. Or they're saying, we are doing this, and we will get to it at a later time. And so the speed of responsiveness, I can't give you an average time, but I can let you know that for sure there will be a response, and then also response back to the community on it.
Is that something that you could come up with in the future? Just like, you know, do the statistics on it and see what your average response times are? I think it would be helpful for us to know, based on knowing how much time it's taking, and do you need more resources, or can we do something different that would make it faster?
Mayor Woods, Vice Mayor Jennifer Adams, council members, we would be happy to do that, yes.
Very good.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Carroll?
I was going to say, that's a really good question, and I appreciate that Vice Mayor is asking that. Be good information for us to have. I know that I have this number memorized, and it's actually in one of my speed dials because I call it when I see somebody that might need help. And the response time that I have seen, at least I've asked for a response back from the Care and Hope Line, was usually between 20 minutes and I think is as long as an hour and a half to respond, but it's, for me, it's usually been about that. But that, I think that information would be really helpful for us. I just want to say that I have, I visited the resource village twice, and both times that I was there, there were people that were coming out of the river bottom, and some people were inside the tent and getting services and talking to people. And I have to say that it's such a difficult thing to do, to remove people from an area that's not safe, that they felt that they wanted to stay in, and I know that all of that is very a difficult thing to do. And we're working with humans, and, but I have to say that, at least what I saw when I was there, when I walked around, was I did see that people were giving dignity the best that we can, and it was a very compassionate and comfortable area to be in, and that we were able to give those services. So I just appreciate what you guys did. I appreciate that we were able to bring all of the municipalities around us as part of that, and as our PMIC, because it takes a village, it could just, just not us. It takes a lot of other people to be able to help those in need and to be able to do the care that they, that they need also. So I just want to say thank you so much for that. I think our incident management team was incredible. Everybody that we were able to pull together to be a part of that, to make those decisions, and then, you know, the care that we're doing right now on the river bottom to make sure that, again, it's a safe place. So I just want to say thank you so much. I think it was incredible, and again, we talk about it, and it's really important. Rare, brief, and one time is what we want. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else in the council for the comments or questions? Sounds good. Thank you so much. Appreciate all the hard work. Mr. City Manager, any other announcements this evening?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. That moves us on. Right before we get to public appearances here, just want to make sure I read our statement. So tonight's agenda has a number of items that the City Council must consider in order to conduct city business. Guidelines for conduct at City Council meetings are available on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. I will now read the protocol for ensuring the proper conduct of City Council meetings. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We just need to make sure we're hearing everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, I will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, I will issue a verbal warning and let them know that continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If still no cooperation, I will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If no cooperation, then I will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only to escort them out of the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed from the meeting, I will recess the meeting. Next up, item 6, Public Appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the City Council may only discuss matters listed on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the City Council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the City Council. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks and from becoming boisterous while addressing the City Council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served, in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. That leads me to the cards that I have this evening. Once again, I will call these in the order that they were received, and the first speaker I have this evening is Mario Martinez. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Mario Martinez, and I live in Tempe. Regarding the attempted Coyote proposal, I opposed it. To every member on the council, with the exception of Cory, I am proud to have supported all of you. There is an honest difference of opinion on this matter that we can discuss later, and I look forward to doing that. To be perfectly respectful, civil, I want to point out that honesty on this issue does not apply to certain professionally dishonest public figures like Cory Woods, Hugh Holman, and Neil Giuliano. Cory, you described the Coyote deal as the best deal in Arizona sports history, even though it had a massive amount of giblets. In your campaign video, you courageously said that you were going to go down to the legislature, lead the effort to get rid of giblets because they rob our schools. Today, Cory, you're not even honest enough to admit that you lied in the first place. That's pathetic. Hugh Holman, our esteemed former mayor, yes, he's a registered Tempe developer attorney who donated 100, over 100K of his legal services for the Coyotes agreement. Obviously, Holman figures that he's, there's a good chance that he's going to get, you know, more than 100K worth of benefits later on down the road, and with Cory as mayor, quite frankly, he just might. Neil Giuliano, our other esteemed, esteemed former mayor, okay, he knocks down over 400K per year in salary from the Greater Phoenix leadership. Neil doesn't know what regular working families have to deal with. That's exactly why he was advocating ripping off the Tempe taxpayers to benefit these deadbeat carpet-bagging billionaires who are out of state. And the rest of the council has to decide. You guys voted 7-0 to put this on the table. The Tempe taxpayers voted 57, or 56 to 44 to say, this deal stinks. And you did that. So you guys have to decide, are you going to back, let's see, Cory and Neil and Hugh again? And don't get me wrong, you had a lot of, you know, former council has-beens on there. If the KKK guys were still alive, they would have supported you too. That doesn't mean it's a good deal for us. Thank you.
Next speaker I have is Megan Powell. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Megan Powell. I've been a Tempe resident for 15 years, and I'm here to bring to your attention an injury that happened to my stepmom while she was visiting me from Michigan on Tempe Town Lake. Three weeks ago, they were walking down the multipurpose path on Tempe Town Lake, walking their dog, and my dad, you know, took the dog to the side so that she could do her business, and my stepmom was standing stationary on the multipurpose path, and a bicyclist hit her from behind. She fell, hit her head. My dad called 911, and they took her, I think Tempe Fire came first, and they said, you need an ambulance, and they took her to Osborne Trauma. She was there for two days, and she got a concussion, and she had to have six staples in the back of her head. She had a broken rib. I believe she had a pneumothorax, I think is what it's called, where the, her lungs separated from the pleura, and she hurt her tailbone, she had a bunch of, anyhow, it was a tough situation. She's still, you know, recovering from it. She's having like natural consequences of a concussion where she's experiencing vertigo. She's a high school administrator, and she's having a hard time, you know, working because she can't really see screens, and also she really just can't move around like she did before. I'm bringing this to your attention because this could have been so much more serious than what it was. Like, we were really, she's 62, my stepmom's 62 years old, and we were really lucky that this wasn't more of a serious, like, she's going to recover from this. But I'm hoping that, you know, in light of that, maybe you guys would consider putting in lane markers on the multipurpose path for walkers and bikers. It's interesting because I was actually talking to a mom about this, it was the last day of Kyren Schools. Oh, can I have a minute left? It was the last day of Kyren Schools, and we were at a party, and I was talking, I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm going here, I'm going to be here tonight, I'm so nervous. And she's, she's a cyclist, and she said- And she's a cyclist and she said that she avoids that path as a cyclist because she's had people walk in front of her while she was riding her bike and she didn't want to injure anyone or swerve and injure herself. So I hope you guys will consider this and thank you so much for your time and consideration. And thank you so much to the service for everything you do for our community. Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Michael Nuccio. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence.
My name is Michael Nuccio. I am a Tempe resident of 25 years. I am coming to you in high spirits on the defeat of the Tempe Entertainment District proposition, but I am not here to gloat or merely celebrate. I am here with a sincere plea that it be taken, the events, as something of a weather vane. One of the key slogans of the Tempe Wins campaign was, this was the unanimous agreement of decades and decades of Tempe city leadership, current and former. To have these electorate not merely reject the summation of all of that agreement of so many decades, not merely reject it, but full-throatedly reject it, is something that should not only cause a severe amount of soul searching among you, but possibly even a willingness to allow yourselves to be examined for the possibility of conflict of interest. Every single one of you, except for maybe one exception, has appeared in advertising videos for the campaign. Two of you, specifically councilperson Randy Keating and councilperson Navarro, have used their entire social media presence to promote the thing. And Mayor Woods has allowed himself to be photographed hobnobbing with Nick Bastian, the chief of the Tempe Wins campaign. There is nothing about this that looks pure. At the very bare minimum, I can only hope that from this point forward, you will look at what has been a decades-long transition of turning Tempe into the valleys, Silicon Valley, and High Times competing with Phoenix. As a fantasy, there are no High Times. The city of Tempe and the electorate does not want glittering developments. The city of Tempe and the electorate does not want something like an entertainment district. They want grocery stores, they want affordable housing, they would like something to be done with that food city on the Apache Corridor, that's for sure. But at the bare minimum, they want their bare necessities covered. They want their bread, not the circuses. And with one final thing, this campaign was absolutely defamatory to former councilperson Lauren Cooby. She was your former colleagues. I have heard some of the worst things said about her and her husband by people actually within executive positions of that campaign. And none of you have had the decency to make a public comment to say that, no, she's not trying to cover for a gambling operation that her husband is in charge of. Not one of you has come to even say some even slightly decent thing about her. And I think that's awful. So I'm pleased as punch at the results of this election, but I think it bears quite a bit about how out of touch the city leadership not only become, but has been for a very long time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Jim Freedom. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, Jim Freedom, resident of Earth. I know what you're thinking, oh boy, here comes that annoying freedom guy. He's coming up here to, you know, I'm the guy that thinks the Constitution trumps your meeting rules. How silly of me, I know. I don't actually believe that, though. I'm more aligned with Lysander Spooner, who pointed out that the Constitution has either authorized such a government as we've had, or it's been powerless to prevent it. Either way, it's unfit to exist. We need something new. I do what I do just to prove that the supreme law of the land is a stupid joke and none of you follow its rules. We'll never be able to fix the problems in our society when our representatives don't play by the rules that we all thought were in place. To the people watching online or later, your anger is righteous and justified. The servants have written their own new rules that contradict freedom and use their army of order-following cowards with badges to punish enough of us effectively, making us their servants. Don't you dare walk across that street in a place we don't like. Don't you dare make certain noises with your mouth that we don't like. Don't you dare try to record public court proceedings. Don't you dare grow a food garden in your own front yard. Don't you dare assemble protests in a way or place we don't like. Don't you dare travel in a vehicle without using a seatbelt. Don't you dare sell tamales without paying for our permission first. You see where I'm going with this? These are all violations of freedom that you all just think are normal and they're unacceptable. To a society that thinks that these threats are acceptable, that's a profoundly sick society. And Krishnamurti points out, it's no measure of health to be well-adjusted to a profoundly sick society. The few good things that do come out of this building could be easily replaced by voluntary systems that don't require terrorism and revenue generating for funding. You can get your money through voluntary means, you don't have to do it through the traditional ways. Just because that's been the way we've been doing it forever, doesn't mean we always have to do it. I'm here to suggest that you need to dig within yourselves, not you guys, everybody else. Because I know you guys are just listening until I'm done so you can say thank you and then go on with your lives. Anyways, that's all I'll pretty much have to say with that. For the last minute, I just wanted to point out one thing that Cory said that I didn't like in a Facebook, it was a Facebook advertisement, and I quote, vaccines, getting vaccinated is what keeps us free to do the things we want, end quote. Can you hear how that sounds? Can you hear how messed up that sounds? I mean, I know that's off topic from everything else I had, but it just, the people in this room, they even pointed out, the people said one thing about an issue and then you guys said seven zero the other way. I mean, that's the way it is. You guys don't listen, you don't care. And I'm just here to voice that out so more people can be made aware of that. Because as soon as we reach a critical mass of people that are aware of what's actually happening, then we can start to work on how to change it.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the city council? If so, please get my attention. Oh, yes. Ms. Justice, please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
My name is Darlene Justice. I'm 78 years old. I have spent 60 years of that time in Tempe. And I love Tempe. I have been involved at different levels with the city, let's say not with the city, but with our community in that. I am really outraged with the attack that you are all hearing. You felt that this was a good plan, but you voted to send it to the voters. The voters had the opportunity to vote. It isn't like things were put aside and that. I live very close to that area and I think it could have brought a lot of great things to the city of Tempe. Now we have a landfill that we've got to clean up and the voters, the citizens are going to have to pay for that. There was a big thing, oh, they're not going to stay in there. Well, they're looking at Mesa. Man, I hope they make it in Mesa. I hope if they move to the reservation, I hope they make it there. Why are people even entertaining talking to them if they're so horrible? You guys have to realize that not everybody feels the way you're hearing from a few. And I know that there was a majority of vote, but I also know there was a lot of naysaying and a lot of incorrect information. And Cory, I'm very sorry that someone is trying to single you out. Hugh Holman, yourself, and Neil, okay? All of a sudden, they're singling you out, but Mark Mitchell and Harry Mitchell were on board with this too. And we had so many council members that were behind this. So you have a very large crowd of people that have been on your side with it. And I just feel very bad that a lot of misinformation has gone out and you guys should not be taking the heat on this. Thank you very much and God bless you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the city council this evening? If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting. I will move to item number seven, which is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. The consent agenda this evening is listed as miscellaneous items 7A1 through 7A6, awards of bids and contracts 7B1 through 7B9, and resolutions 7C1 through 7C6. Any item, once again, designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. All right, seeing none, I will look to the clerk to see if there were any comments received from the public wishing to address the city council on a consent agenda public hearing item.
No additional cards.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll look to the council. Are there any other items that you would like to have pulled? Councilmember Hodge?
Nope, just so moved.
Okay. And so that's been moved. Do I have a second? Seconded by councilmember Garland. With that saying, please vote. And that item passes six to zero with councilmember Navarro absent. Let me also say, congratulations, Kelly, on your appointment. All right. That will take us then to item eight, which is the non-consent agenda. All items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter and the city clerk will provide the council members with the disclosure form at this time. First item under the section is 8A1, which is to approve the utilization of National Association of State Procurement Officials Value Point Cooperative Contracts with Verizon Wireless, AT&amp;T Corporation, and T-Mobile USA for the purchase of a variety of wireless devices and airtime services. Council, any comments or discussion?
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Hodge, you have a second? Seconded by vice mayor Adams, please vote. And that item passes six to zero with councilmember Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8A2, which is to approve a one-year contract renewal with sun life assurance to provide stop-loss insurance for the city's self-funded medical plan. Council, any comments or discussion? Moved by vice mayor Adams, you have a second? Seconded by councilmember Hodge, please vote. That item also passes six to zero with councilmember Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8A3, which is to approve a one-year contract renewal with Express Scripts Incorporated, who will provide pharmacy benefits management services for eligible city employees and their dependents to be administered by the Human Resources Department. Council, any comments or discussion? Been moved by councilmember Keating, you have a second? Seconded by councilmember Chin, please vote. And that item passes six to zero with councilmember Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8A4, which is to approve the utilization of a six-month National Association of State Procurement Officials Value Point Cooperative Contract with Saratoga Rack Marketing LLC for the purchase of gasoline and diesel fuels. Any comments or questions from council? Moved by councilmember Hodge, you have a second? Seconded by councilmember Keating, please vote. And that item passes six to zero with councilmember Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8A5, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign Operation Funding Agreement Fiscal Year 2021-22, Number 14A with Valley Metro Rail Incorporated for the purchase and supply of streetcar transit services. Council, any comments or discussion? Moved by vice mayor Adams, you have a second? Seconded by councilmember Chin, please vote. And that item also passes six to zero with councilmember Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8A6, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign Operations Funding Agreement Number 15 with Valley Metro Rail Incorporated for the purchase and supply of light rail and streetcar transit services. Any comments or discussion? Is there a motion? Moved by vice mayor Adams? Seconded by councilmember Hodge, please vote. And that item passes six to zero with councilmember Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8A7, which is to award a construction contract to Lincoln Constructors Incorporated for the replacement parking lot Diablo Stadium project located at 2200 West Alameda Drive, Tempe, Arizona 85282. Council, any comments or discussion? Been moved by councilmember Keating, you have a second? Seconded by councilmember Chin, please vote. And that item passes six to zero with councilmember Navarro absent. The last item under the section is 8A8, which is to award a construction manager at risk contract to Ochene Gardner Construction LLC for the North Tempe Waterline Replacement Project located at various locations in North Tempe. It's been moved by councilmember Hodge and seconded by councilmember Keating, please vote. And that item also passes six to zero with councilmember Navarro absent. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. There are no items scheduled to be read and introduced tonight, so I will move on to the next section. Which means the next items here are for second public hearing and final adoption, which were read and introduced on May 4, 2023, and votes on these items will be taken this evening. The first item under this section is 8C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R2 to R1 PAD with a planned area development overlay to establish development standards and a development plan review for a new three-story attached single-family residential development consisting of eight units for Padana Tempe located at 2447 East University Drive. The applicant is in light 10 architecture. Is there a presentation from the architect this evening or from the applicant?
The developer is trying to join virtually. Can you confirm he's able to? Yes, that is him. G D, mayor and council members, my name is Steve Greco from Denver, Colorado. Oh, will do. And did we confirm Ahmet is able to join us? Are you able to hear me? So we just want to kind of recap since we last met two weeks ago. So I was going to have Ahmet, are you able to speak?
Yes. Can you hear me, Steve?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm Ahmet Sedan. I'm the developer for this project and I'm going to apologize for not being able to be there in person, but I had a prior engagement. So Steve is there on my behalf as well. I want to thank, first of all, the Tempe Planning Division as well as the Development Review Commission for their help getting us to this point of this project. And I'll turn it over to Steve to start the presentation.
All right, so the first slides in this deck are what you've already seen, so we're not going to focus on those, but they are here in case you need to reference back to them. Since we last met, we did hear the council members request to engage the neighbors more. So what we did is reach out specifically to the five neighbors highlighted in blue here and the other residents who expressed interest in the project. We sent them overnight letters for a meeting that was held in person and virtual with a translator on Monday, this past Monday. It was attended by about eight people, virtually, and 12 people in person. Fortunately, none of the residents directly affected by this were able to attend. Some of the neighbors did seem to indicate they were speaking on behalf or did have communication with them. And as we go through the next slides, we just want to show that we are being sensitive in what both the views onto these sites will look like and the views into this development. So the first one is 2432 East Laird Street. And as we go to the slide here, some of the things we're proposing include recessing the window, adding a screen so it would block the view from below, as well as trees on our side of the property, raising the height of the fence, and adding a tree or shrubs into their property. Similar exercise was done at 2436. This is one house to the east. Again, it shows how we feel like this is effective at screening and really softening the effect of our development on these properties. One thing to note is the way that these line up, it doesn't take up their whole backyard and there is ample light and unobscured views. And the next three are not quite as impacted since there's not units directly behind these, but we did study these. So this is one more to the east, 2502. So this is one more to the east, 2502 East Laird, and you can start to get a sense of the scale of the project. I think it helps that we're mixing three and two stories. That will make it compatible with what is existing. And one more on East Laird. This one happens to have a tree in there, and that's what we're showing here, not a proposed tree. And lastly, there is a neighbor to the east of us on East University, and that's what we're showing here. This one, our building essentially lines up with what you're seeing here, which is their parking lot or driveway, and so there is no kind of views onto their backyards or into their private areas. Just a quick recap of what we heard. Building height is probably the most sensitive item, and the things we're doing are trees on our side, raising the height of the fence, and a landscaping option that we'll get to in the next slide. These are some of the other items we did hear. Won't focus as much on those, but please let me know if you want us to cover that. This is something we want read into the record, so I will just read it as a condition for the zoning and PAD application. Number four, the applicant is willing to provide to the adjacent property owners at 2432, 2436, and 2502 East Laird Street, future Oberjan Street, subject to acceptance by the respective owners the following items: raising the height of the existing wall at the south property line to seven feet zero inches. All owners will need to grieve this change for uniformity height. And B, offering landscape options for their backyard to provide enhanced privacy per their individual preferences. Options include the developer will cover the cost, including delivery and installation for one 36-inch box tree or five shrubs, or two, if the homeowner does not want a tree or shrub, the developer will cover the cost of a shading slash privacy device equivalent to the expense of landscape approximately $1,000. And that second item was added as feedback from the meeting we had on Monday, as some people indicated they might not be interested in trees. And this is our last slide, which is the summary of kind of what we've done and the support we've had. We did have two meetings. At both meetings, people indicated that they would reach out to the neighbors, the three directly behind us. Fortunately, we did not have them attend any of those despite our best efforts and further reach out from two other individuals to them after both meetings. We know there are some concerns, but it does feel like the feedback we've gotten is overwhelmingly positive. We did respond quickly, organizing our meeting with many options available, translation and virtual. We really do appreciate all the input from the community. They've been very engaged, very respectful, and I think it's made the project better. And I think Ahmet and myself have become, you know, really just better at what we do through this process, and I just, as a testament to their involvement. The project's support we have received is Development Review Commission voted 7-0. The city of Tempe Community Development Planning Division is recommending approval. We did receive a letter of support from Phil Amorosi and residents of other residential developments on University at Oaks 2 and Oaks 3 attended our neighborhood meeting. Were very supportive of the project. And I'll turn it over to Ahmet for the final benefits.
Quick thing before he starts, actually, councilmember Hodge has a question?
It's not really a question, it's a statement. In your information, you need to change that Laird Street because that's not the name of the street anymore.
Okay.
Yeah, that is something we have changed, and we want to respect our community with the name correct.
Understood. We had it in the record. Does it future change, but it sounds like it already has changed?
It's but on there now, it's on there now, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Apologies for not catching that sooner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no, I want to, I just want to address the benefits that we think that this project offers. Obviously, this is an infill lot or three infill lots, which is, can be a challenging project with development around it and obviously being sensitive to the effects of what we're trying to do. I think we've shown that we're trying to mitigate, we're trying to listen to the oft-sometimes unvarnished feedback from the community and respond to it in a way that hopefully addresses a lot of their concerns as much as we can. Can't see the presentation, so I apologize. You know, the other part is that, you know, instead of having three disparate and different buildings that potentially get built by different folks, we'd like to, we think there's a benefit to consolidating all three of these lots into one lot, creating some efficiencies that allow us to comfortably add two units. And we think that overall, from a design perspective, from an overall neighborhood perspective, from an overhaul city perspective, that's going to provide a better solution than three individual developments. So with that, I want to thank the mayor, the city council, the residents of the community, as well as the citizens of Tempe for the time and attention to our application.
Sounds good, thank you so much. Anyone else from council? Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a word, just a thought. I'd like to thank you for being open to the input of the neighbors in the area and respecting their concerns and being willing to work with them, and good luck with the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garland?
I also want to say, I think the design, it looks nice. I appreciate that you guys have been working with the community. The thing that I keep still thinking about is, you know, that community, Victory Acres has been moved once to make room for a issue, was split in half by the 101, and they are still doing everything they can to hold on to their history and the culture of that community, the generations of people that have been there over the years. They are definitely a Tempe treasure, and so I highly respect and what they do and what they're trying to do. My concern is still that, and it says right here on the benefits of the development, someone could build a duplex 30 feet tall. This is going to be three stories with the 30 feet tall on there, and you absolutely have the right because that's already in the zoning, but just can you, just because you can, should you? And I still keep going back to the amount of questions and concerns from the neighbors of still of that being two-story or three-story right next to the properties. And yes, the idea was putting trees in there, and I think that's a great thing, but it's, how long is it going to take to be as big as it was in those pictures? And I just think that that community, I think, I want to really listen to what that community is saying, and that building 30 feet, even though you have the ability to do that, I still think is not what that community wants, and I don't think what I'd like to see right there for them. So I appreciate all that you've done, but I'm still not going to be supporting this.
Understood.
Thank you so much. Anyone else from council? Comments or questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing portion of this as well. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Speakers have up to three minutes to address the council. If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any further comments or discussion? Yes, councilmember Keating?
Move to approve.
Okay, it's been moved by councilmember Keating.
I'll second.
Seconded by vice mayor Adams. All right, with that, please vote. Okay, all right, and so that item passes then five to one with councilmember Garland voting no and councilmember Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8C-
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just heard from staff if the acceptance of that proposed condition number four is what the applicant presented is also incorporated into the motion to approve.
Would you like for us to retake the vote, just with that language inserted, or?
Yes, please.
Okay, let's do that then, let's just, just to make sure. So basically, if someone wants to make a motion again and then say afterwards with the condition that was as recited by the applicant, that would be sufficient?
Sure. May I move to approve with the language that was cited by the applicant?
Great. Okay, it's been moved by councilmember Keating and seconded by vice mayor Adams. I'll just leave that screen up there. Councilmember Hodge, is yours still working, or?
Yeah, oh, mine is fine.
Okay, there we go. Then that item passes five to one with councilmember Garland voting no and councilmember Navarro absent. Okay, the next item under the section is 8C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Tempe Golf LLC, a California corporation, for Ken McDonald Golf Course. Is there a presentation? Nope, not seeing one. This is also a public hearing item. Is anyone wish to speak on this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Let me go to councilmembers for their comments. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I appreciate Tempe Golf for, they did take the time to get in touch with the Diablos. Thank you, Craig, for facilitating that. I know that they, you know, have all come to a happy agreement, so with that, I will make a motion to approve item 8C2.
It's been moved by councilmember Keating and seconded by councilmember Garland, please Oh, yeah, mine did the same thing. I vote aye, councilmember Garland. And I, okay, that item then passes six to zero with councilmember Navarro absent. Karen, Karen, is there any way to refresh the screen here? Let's see.
F5.
There it is, got it. Never mind, figured it out. Figured it out. Thank you, councilmember Keating. The next item under the section is 8C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of an irrigation easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located in Fairmont Drive west of Diablo Way, and authorizing the mayor or his designated executed easement agreement and related documents. All right, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Been moved by councilmember Hodge and seconded by councilmember Keating, please vote. And that item passes six to zero with councilmember Navarro absent. The next section under this agenda, next item under this section, I should say, is 8C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of two portions of a water and sewer line easement located on tax parcel number 132-67-054 on the north side of Apache Boulevard. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? If so, get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Okay, it's been moved by vice mayor Adams and seconded by councilmember Hodge, please And that item passes six to zero with councilmember Navarro absent. The last item under the section is 8C5, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of two portions of a water and sewer line easement located on tax parcel number 132-67-064B on the north side of Apache Boulevard. Once again, also a public hearing item. Is anyone wish to address the council on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Been moved by councilmember Hodge and seconded by councilmember Keating, please vote. And that item also passes six to zero with councilmember Navarro absent. That brings us to item number nine, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. I will call upon the council members for their comments and/or requests to add an agenda item to a future meeting. This evening, I will start with councilmember Garland.
So the first slide, hold on here. The first slide we're going to talk about is the summer reading program, and it is here, and you can get started by making sure first that you have a library card, which I just got mine a few months ago. This summer reading program runs June 1 through August 1 and has programs and prizes for all ages, and it's a great opportunity to discover everything in our library that our library has to offer. And you can find out more at the library or on their website at temppubliclibrary.org. And this one I'm really super excited about. The city of Tempe has won an award or got an award from the National League of Cities. Tempe was chosen to be a part of the Good Jobs Great Cities Academy by the National League of Cities and the U.S. Department of Labor. This peer learning cohort is part of a once-in-a-generation opportunity to bring infrastructure, clean energy, and advanced manufacturing jobs to the city of Tempe. Through participation in the academy, Tempe will accelerate its work with partners and industry leaders to ensure underserved and underrepresented workers can access equitable and meaningful post-secondary and workforce development opportunities that lead to good jobs. The mayor's office, the Office of Education, Career, and Family Services, the Economic Development Department, and the Office of Sustainability will be working with cross-sector partners and industry leaders as part of this academy that runs through 2024, and we are proud to be partnering with the Tempe Chamber of Commerce, Arizona State University, Rio Salado Community College, Tempe Union High School District, and Arizona At Work, Maricopa County. And I just want to say, congratulations to the city of Tempe, this is awesome. It's going to make a difference in lives, and I'm really excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up tonight, I have councilmember Hodge.
Okay, on June 3, Saturday, councilmember Navarro and I will be doing a Breakfast with Brindetta slash with Joel, safety, and it's going to be phenomenal. We are bringing out the fire, we're bringing out the police, we're bringing out different community people talking about safety, water safety, safety over the summer. It's just going to be a great time, and you will get to see councilmember Navarro and councilmember Hodge in, you know, summer gear, so get ready for that and be excited about that. All right, and also on May 15, the mayor and I have met with a delegation from Kenya. It was a very heart-rimming and phenomenal thing we did. It was, actually, I just love meeting with them and learning from them about what's in their country and also, you know, them learning directly from us. After the mayor met with them and I met with them, we actually went over, and I would love to thank Judge Kane and his beautiful assistant, who actually put it all together, and we actually did a phenomenal walk-on on the courts. I mean, she did a phenomenal job of walking us around and telling us the different court system, and they really enjoyed it. Almost got a chance to go down to the police station, but we didn't, down to the jail, but, you know, something was happening at that moment, so we didn't do that, but it was a great time. And then we took them over to city, you know, to Tempe Union, and they got a base of what education in our city is. So they were extremely excited, and they want to learn more. So they really want us, some of us, to come over to their country and actually see them in action and giving them some feedback at the time, so thank you so much for that. And last but not least, we had myself and Sapan, my trustee person who's my counterpart, we actually went over to Day at the Beach on Friday, and we was with Free Friday with our preschoolers, and it was watching our preschoolers and their families get together and water paint and just have activities outside. It just makes your heart feel great, and also that those parents were happy that they didn't have to do all that in their homes. So actually, they got to do it outside and didn't have to worry about cleaning up afterwards, but it's a great program. Thank you to the city of Tempe for having that, and Naomi, thank you for heading that over. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, I've got councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge the men and women of Tempe Police Force on this National Police Week. It's, you know, it's a difficult job, often very, very thankless, but I know I speak for the rest of this body when I say that we appreciate the work you do to keep our community safe. You know, it's a difficult environment nationally, unfortunately, but know that the citizens of Tempe and your elected officials 100% have your back, so thanks again for all you do. We really appreciate it, so enjoy National Police Week, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Keating. Next up, vice mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several announcements this evening. Together Tempe is, it's a name of organization, is having a healthy giving campaign, and it provides aid to children, families, and older adults and folks with disabilities. It funds Go For Shelters program for the children and youth. To contribute to togethertempe.org, you can go to that, or you can call 480-858-2300. Once again, that was 480-858-2300, or you can donate on your water bill. And that, if you have questions about adding it to your water bill, you can call 480-350- And that, if you have questions about adding it to your water bill, you can call four-eight-zero-three-five-zero-eight-three-six-one. So please consider donating to that, a very needed organization in our community. And all your donations are tax deductible. Another plus. Secondly, Tempe Pride is coming up on June third. It's going to be a party and a disco, and it'll be held from seven to 10:00 in Centerpoint Plaza at six-six-zero South Mill Avenue. So that's seven to 10:00 on June third. And finally, I would like to express my sympathy to Berdeta for the loss of her sister. Berdeta, you're in our thoughts and our prayers, and I know you're going to have a challenging day tomorrow, but know that we're here there for you. That was my announcements, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, mayor. I have no announcements tonight.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, and that brings it to me. So this was a photo that was actually just taken today of myself and my aide Parish Fies and my intern, Reem El-Sad. Reem is graduating from Arizona State University this year. Go Devils! And she recently was accepted for a program in Congressman Greg Stanton's office in Washington, DC. She has been working with me now for nearly a year, and I can tell you, she has just been, she's an exceptional young woman. She was such an exceptional addition to the office. She does truly great work, and she fit in from the very minute she started. I always know when actually I'm really going to like someone, we're going to click, when after about a week, they actually stop sort of doing the mayor woods thing and they just start making fun of me. That is, that is the environment around the office, as Parish knows very well. We work hard, but we frankly get along really well, and we try to encourage a very fun environment. But I always tell Reem, I am looking forward to her one day being in Congress, and to me, one day calling her Congresswoman El-Sad, because I'm telling you, she has really great things ahead of her. She's just, just truly a wonderful, exceptional human being, and so I'm so excited for her. I just wanted to thank her for her service in the mayor's office over the last few months, on her graduation from Arizona State University, and on her pending position in Congressman Stanton's office. He's getting a great addition to that office. So thank you, Reem, so much for everything. With that, we'll go to item number 10, public appearances. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council? And if so, please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, seeing none, that brings us to item number 11, which is the all-important adjournment. The next regular scheduled city council meeting is on June first, 2023, and with that, at only 7:14 PM, we are adjourned.